We have a quorum, sounds good. So we begin with public comments. If anyone would like to speak to either use the chat feature, you can also use the raise hand feature. And I know that we'll have some folks joining us for some parts of what comes up later, so I'll give it a moment just to see if anyone has raised their hand and or trying to write to Tricia or myself to see if they'd like to speak. Phenomenal, and I'll continue to promote the let's talk feature of the ICSD as well as reach out to any board member at any point in time or our board clerk. Since there's no public comment, I assume there's no committee responses? Fantastic. The approval of the minutes is next on our agenda. Pat and Moira, questions about our minutes?
Yeah, it looked fine to me.
Great, Moira, you're muted, but I assume you're saying it looks fine to you?
It looked fine to me.
Great, and I don't know if you noticed, but we are now putting a disclaimer on all of our minutes, talking about the transcript and the ways in which the technology may not always accurately transcribe our minutes, so they're fine by me as well. The minutes are approved. We have three policies on the agenda, the first two, we already have done a first reading of at a board meeting. This is just to see if we have any additional comments and to put in front of the board for a second reading and adoption. Dan, I see you're here, if you care to speak to both of these, just to remind us and we can capture it in the minutes as well, that'd be great.
Sure, thanks, Sean. So the first one is Policy 1900, Parent and Family Engagement, and we were selected by NICE Ed Office of ESCE for monitoring to meet federal requirements, and we're participating in a desk review. And some of the feedback that we received on this policy, which I spoke to last time, was that we should no longer use the word, the words "parent involvement", we should use "parent and family engagement" instead. And I made those, I made those changes. I also, the last time I got some feedback to change some capitals, and I made some of those adjustments as well. Also, the last time we met, there was, I did get some feedback from our reviewer who said that although we cannot change parent to caregiver, the guidance that I received from the state is that we could use a phrase, a phrase often used when a district wants to include caregiver, is "parents and persons in parental relationship with the student", and we could, we could, we could put that in there, and that, or not, or not, not, not at all, yeah. We could leave it the way it is, and that covers caregivers, grandparents, foster parents, aunts and uncles. I'm sorry to get lost in the language on this, but that was, that was the feedback I got, and it's from a, it's, it's all from a regulation. Section 1116 says that we have to include this language in our written policy, so I apologize about that.
Dan, no apology necessary. Part of the hazing to the policy committee is getting lost in the language. And so we were very keen on trying to find what the appropriate terms and or phrase should be. And so while it is definitely verbose, it is long, it is an interesting phrase for us to consider at some point in time. If I'm not mistaken, again, "persons in parental relationship to the student", is that, is that the phrase?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's phrase used "parents and persons in parental relationship with the student".
Yeah. So Pat and Moira, we don't have to use that, but, but legally speaking, that was what was recommended. And so I was just intrigued by the, the language. And it does capture a number of our families who may not have legal standing, but are in parental relationships with students, right? And so I think as Dan said, grandparents, aunties, uncles, close personal friends, et cetera. So thoughts or comments, we can do one at a time. Policy 1900, it was some language, I don't want to say simple, but it's a simple language change. Reactions, suggestions, thoughts?
So my, my reaction was not to, I think, the accuracy of the phrase, because although it is long and cumbersome, it does encompass a range of, of relationships that are important to children and their caregivers. I was just scrolling through the policy where it says "parent and family engagement", and that's highlighted in yellow. And I, I was cringing at the idea that every time we use that phrase, we would have to use the entire cumbersome phrase. And I'm wondering whether if we want to adopt that, we might want to note at the beginning or somewhere saying, "this phrase refers to parents, family, and persons in a parental relationship with students", whenever used, just because it's, it's so cumbersome to, to repeat multiple times throughout a policy. But I would like to acknowledge it in some way that's succinct.
More thoughts, comments, reactions?
Yeah, that sounds fine to me if we can figure out a way to acknowledge it, but not use it repeatedly, because it's just too clunky.
Yeah, I'm not a fan, go ahead, Rob.
No, Sean, I was just monitoring the, the policy committee, and I am shocked that the policy committee is hazing. Dan, I just want to, so I, you know, I'm not going to weigh in, but just, no, no hazing, people.
I didn't use that phrase.
And the, and the language is cumbersome, and I agree with Pat. Shorten it, you know, whatever, okay. Just looking out for you then.
Thanks, Rob.
Yes, it was a poor choice of terms. I'll make sure that that gets reflected in the minutes, especially with the transcription. And Pat, I completely agree. I don't know where is the appropriate place. I don't like asterisks either. But at some point in time, I was hoping that we could find a way to use it one time, and then for all other instances indicate that this is what we're referring to.
I, I'm going to suggest that possibly we could add it to the first short paragraph that uses the phrase "parent and family engagement", which was probably eight or nine, but since, since Dan has very kindly highlighted that phrase in yellow, it's "the school district will be governed by the definition of parent and family engagement in according with Section 8108 of the ESCE, and all schools will carry out parent programs, activities, and procedures", and we could add a sentence saying by, in, in use of the phrase "parent and family engagement", the ICSD means to include parents, caregivers, and persons in, or any, any person in the position of a parental relationship?
Dan, if I could, I would use the phrase "also recognizes and affirms persons in parental relationships with students", something similar to that, if that's okay by you, Pat?
Sure. Yeah.
Because part of the idea is not just that we're recognizing it, but I think we want to affirm the number of, of the various family compositions that we have in our community.
Yeah, with, within the use of this phrase, the district recognizes and affirms, so, so that it's understood that whenever people see that.
Yeah.
And Dan, I'm unsure, we'll be working this out. It's part of your role, working with the policy committee. It's also something to keep in the notes for policy committee members, to keep this phrase in mind as we move forward with additional policies. We've made an intentional point for the past, I want to say 10 years, maybe slightly shorter than that, to use parents and caregivers, to just move away from just using the word "parents", and so we'll have to, we may have to make another change as well, given where we find ourselves, but, so just a note for us to be mindful of, of how we acknowledge parents and caregivers.
But, but just, just to reaffirm for, because this is, this policy is dealing with a state, a New York State policy, we are, we are screened to use the language they want us to use.
That's correct, yep. We have a little more flexibility in the policies that we write that are not state mandates or federal guidelines. Dan, I see you typing, I apologize to have you multitask. Or, and to my colleagues, were there any other thoughts or changes beyond that for Policy 1900? I think we can see that all the, it's the same policy we've used before, with the exception of things being in yellow, so, and the note, and the changes that we note that we'll take a look at prior to sending to the full board.
Okay.
Send to the board for a second reading and adoption?
Yep.
Yes.
And Dan, I'll send you a note as well to add to the multitasking, just to send this to the policy committee members, so they can see the way in which we've captured it prior to, we can do it at the board meeting as well, but it just may be helpful for us to get a quick look at it as well.
Makes sense, thank you.
Thank you, I greatly appreciate the help. And the same, and the similar thing happens for Policy 6701, which is, oh no, this is a different policy. My, I thought we were doing the same thing. This is, we changed language to talk about our audit. This was a policy that was recommended through our auditors at the end of last fiscal year. So Dan, I believe you were part of this audit, or this policy as well, with Amanda?
Yes, yeah, I can talk about it. So this was another part of our desk review and feedback we received. We had to, we must, we had to identify a procedure for fixed assets for our title program, so this policy was created. It helps us maintain in an inventory of assets, provide accountability, provide insurance coverage, and everything that's a fixed asset carries a minimum value of $500. We're going to maintain a property record, an inventory, and also, this is something that we are part of when we subscribe to NICE Ed, and we contracted with a specific company, CBiz, that is managing our inventory, and they help with fixed asset accounting, cost appreciation, inventory management, barcode, barcode tagging, and financial reporting requirements. I added a, a language in the doc, I, I believe it's in yellow, by a company that provides accounting for fixed asset cost appreciation, inventory management, barcode tagging, and financial reporting requirements. I removed the specific company from the policy. We didn't, I got some feedback that it shouldn't be in there. Also, the last time we met, I was asked to change a few paragraphs in just order, and I did that as well. So I think that's about it for this one.
Pat and Moira, questions, comments?
Well, this is not the sexiest policy we've ever worked on.
What is?
It's pretty exciting, yeah.
Respectfully, as Amanda knows, we have a couple more coming from this same series that are about, you know, who gets a credit card? Who does not get a credit card? What's the value? So we'll be working on a number of these policies in terms of the accounting, both in response to our audit and suggestions, as well as just general good practice. So this is a relatively simple fix. I did ask, Dan, I'm sure the folks did as well, to take out CBiz. What we've learned from writing our policies is the minute we identify a specific or particular business, person, et cetera, that changes. And so just to make it as flexible as possible was the idea behind it, so. So if it's good by the committee, we'll move it forward for a second reading and adoption?
Sounds good.
Yeah, I, I, I think it looks very succinct and straightforward and neat. I'm, I'm quite pleased with this policy. It's early.
Yep, well, thank you both, Pat and Moira. You helped reorganize the paragraph structure as well, and cut out some other stuff that we didn't really need, so many thanks for that, so.
Amanda.
Please, go ahead.
Amanda is also the author of this, I should give her some credit for that as well. So just to throw that in.
Excellent. It's a fine job.
Great, great. And probably what we'll spend the most time talking about, as well as just getting an update and doing some thinking, because it's going to possibly have some larger impact. The Code of Conduct Advisory Council has been meeting to have conversations about the code of conduct, even while that ended come Ju-, July 30th, right? And so the original Code of Conduct Advisory Council was scheduled to provide recommendations to the Board of Education to revise our code of conduct. COVID-19, as we know, disrupted that. We, at our reorganization meeting, we re-upped the Code of Conduct Advisory Council for an additional year, thinking that we would use that time again to provide some suggestions to the board about our current code of conduct. And having some meetings, I see a couple folks who are part of those meetings. I should say Anna Canova, and I hope, and I pronounced your name right, is a graduate student at Ithaca College. She's been doing some research and working with Dan pretty intently. Merrill Phipps, the director of the village at Ithaca, Anne has been on these meetings. Erin, Dan has been organizing us. And Anne Byrne Thomas from Cortland Education Department, and myself have been meeting pretty weekly for the past probably seven weeks. And during that time, the thought process was that we would not be able, obviously, to undertake a complete writing of the code of conduct. With that being said, there are some aspects of the code of conduct that folks believed warranted immediate attention. A prime example would be the dress code. If we are beginning online instruction in a virtual realm, our dress code does things like, says that you can't wear face coverings. That may be fine if we're home, but if we're doing in-person, that obviously is going to be out of code. And so what the committee did was to take a look at some of the most immediate needs, and to have a conversation about what would be an addendum to the current code of conduct to begin conversation. Now, I'll say, this is me speaking as an individual, not as the Advisory Council. Some of the things that are written may disrupt current practices. And so we're going to have to have some conversations about what does that mean for teachers, for unions, for ESPs, for administrators, et cetera. And so the goal here is to have a conversation, hopefully to keep pushing this forward, to have further conversations. And so let me stop with that quick caveat. But I will say, Dan, or is there anything that you would add that I missed? And Lily, my apologies, Lily, because you have been the driver up till probably about two months ago, you've been really helping us push this code of conduct forward. So things to add to, that you would put in to the hopper?
I would just add that, you know, I really enjoyed this work, but we also added, recently, we added some items about mask wearing as well, and we have attendance, homework, grading, co-curriculars, and I just want to add that there's a few, a few more great sections we should provide us with some great discussion. If, and Sean, if you want me to go through, I'm happy to go through and give an overview of the document if you would like as well.
That's a question for Moira and Pat. I, I have the privilege of reading this document 13, 18, 20 something times, and so doesn't mean I know the most recent changes, but maybe it might be helpful to provide some context for the committee and for other board members about how we got to where we're at and what is, what the conversations were.
I read the document a couple times, not as many as you did, but I think maybe some context would be useful. Yeah, what the, what the conversations were. Also, be interested to know, you know, were there issues that were contentious or naughty?
Yeah, I, I I work 9:00 to 4:30, and only really had a chance to look this over, you know, kind of speed reading. So rather than me asking questions, I would very much appreciate knowing where the, the pressure points are, and then ask my questions.
So sure, Dan, how about I step back for a minute and have you sort of walk us through what's here, if that's okay?
Yeah, no problem. And, and I know Merrill, you're on the call too, so if you want to jump in at any point as well. So this is an addendum created by the Code of Conduct Advisory Council. It basically outlines the rights and responsibilities of our educational community, and it's related specifically to reopen ICSD. And it really is about recognizing education curriculum, but really supporting students during a global pandemic. And one of the big things was not allowing this crisis to result in the creation of new, or the continued reliance on existing oppressive systems. And, and that, that was just kind of the overview for the beginning of it. Then we got into students' rights and responsibilities, caregivers' rights and responsibilities. For students, we, we spoke about instruction informed by best practice. We talked about virtual instruction is available through a different variety of modalities, both synchronous and asynchronous. For caregivers' rights and responsibilities, we talked about prompt and timely, communication aligned with the existing ICSD communication protocol. We also added for caregivers to be responsive as possible for ICSD requests for health survey information that's going to come up. We moved into educators' rights and responsibilities. We talked about training and PD, and again, touching back to communication in a timely and prompt manner. And we kept going through the rights and responsibilities, but I think the, the deeper conversations happened through some of our important policy changes during reopen ICSD. And the first one was attendance. We talked about, we know, you know, we know attendance has a direct and positive relationship with student outcomes. We also know we're in a current health crisis, and we know that we have to use creative ways to reach out to students and caregivers who aren't engaged in distance learning. And our goal here really is to support students and build those positive relationships. So within this section, there are even suggestions that schools assign teachers or other allies as daily attendance contacts, use multiple ways of communication, phone, text, or other creative ways. And another thing was finding someone in the building, finding an adult in the school who's already connected with that student, and build upon those relationships. There was certainly a lot of discussion about dress code. You know, one of the things we did talk about was suspending face coverings during, during our public health crisis, but also being flexible with the dress code. And that students can wear clothing that is comfortable, expresses their gender, self-identified gender, and maintains a safe and disruptive learning environment. Non-disruptive, sorry, but, but also if issues come up, that students will work with the administrators and families to negotiate issues with dress code. We also had some conversation about mask wearing that's in here. We're, we wrote, "students who are medically capable are expected to wear masks, but also school personnel are expected to leverage their relationship in positive, affirming ways when children aren't wearing masks, and should not engage in bullying or other behavior if they're not." We had some conversation about virtual learning expectations. We talked about prioritizing on the relationship and the care, but all, and also respecting students' and families' right to privacy. And this, we had some discussion around that students, we cannot require students to turn on their cameras, and that our student engagement must be measured in other ways. Homework, we, we spoke about, and we know that homework is regularly included in, in a typical day. But we also said that teachers should be, make every effort out of signing homework and be conscious of the needs of the student, and adjust expectations, given the reality of these unprecedented, unprecedented times, excuse me. And we had a little bit about grading, which talked about making sure students should not be impacted, or students that are impacted by equity issues related to this pandemic should not be penalized with failing grades. And then lastly, we spoke briefly about athletics and co-curricular activities, and that, I mean, it basically says that all children should be included when and if athletics and other co-curricular activities can safely resume. So that's just a, a basic overview. And Merrill or anyone else who's been with this much longer than me, if they want to jump in, this might be a good time to.
Yeah, sure, um, can you guys hear me okay? I'm in my car on my cell phone.
Yes, we can, ma'am.
Okay, great. Yeah, so just, you know, Dan did a great job giving an overview of what's in the document, and I, I'm sorry if I, it was a little garbly when Sean was talking, but, you know, we just sort of, as an advisory committee, thought that this was really the ideal, important time to be looking at our code of conduct, and in the context of the fact that school as we know it fell apart. It doesn't exist anymore. So if we are going to be rebuilding our educational system, this is the ideal time to be rebuilding our historically oppressive structural systems, like our disciplinary systems and other things referenced in the code of conduct. So this document was really an attempt to target any of the ways that we thought that students returning to school, in whichever way, were particularly vulnerable to oppressive policies. And to put down some language that really matched what comes out of the district leadership anyway, talking about, you know, what we've noticed, what we've learned from this pandemic, how these are gaping holes regarding equity are growing bigger and bigger. So we really wanted to craft a document that gave some sort of top-down attitude, so that when buildings are crafting individual policy, they have something to look at to say, "is this policy oppressive, or is this what we want to be doing to keep our community safe and supported?" So Sean and Dan, I hope that was like a, a good, big picture, and sort of where we were coming from as a committee.
Absolutely, Merrill, thank you. I think that's where we began, is with that. I think that's where we began is with that fundamental question. And a couple of the conversations to your question, Moira, were thorny in terms of trying to negotiate already negotiated union contracts with expectations of eliminating oppressive systems, right? So who has control over curriculum? How do we take attendance? Is homework in the purview of administrators? So we recognize that a number of these things have been used to hurt and exclude students and then trying to push in a particular direction. I think as Merrill eloquently stated, because we are going to have to rebuild our systems, hopefully from the bottom up and not the top down.
Right. And I just want to say that my biggest concern about this is communication with the people who are actually going to be, you know, doing the work. And, you know, we've had situations in the past with our code of conduct where there are things written in it that teachers are woefully ignorant of. And so, and we're talking about some, you know, potentially some pretty major changes to our approach. And so, teachers need to know before we adopt this what the thrust is of our approach.
So Moira, I think that's, we were engaged in that conversation for some time. We know it needs extensive and wide outreach. I was the person who was holding it back until the policy committee could at least see it.
Yeah.
So we are trying to move forward with understanding that we may not all agree, but we at least wanted to have a conversation here. After we have this conversation, if it's agreeable, we will send to all of our union leadership, is my understanding, Dan, what we agreed upon, including all of our PTAs and including some of our student organizations to have further conversation. Not that this is the document that we're going to adopt, but this is the conversation that we're hoping to have. And so, we're aware that in some regards, there are some pretty radical shifts. And in other regards, this is what we've been asking for as part of reopen ICSD. We've already been pushing in this direction as well. So, but yeah, there's no expectation that we adopt tonight. And then this is what it is. It's, here's the conversation that's been had over the summer. We know it needs input. We want as much input as possible. And Merrill and Dan, please correct me if I'm wrong. Part of it is, we're looking forward to just having the conversation about the ways in which not doing this is oppressive.
Yeah, that's exactly right, Sean. And also what I would say, you know, to Moira's point, which is, you know, something we talked about extensively, that there should not be a single staff or teacher in this district who finds any of these ideas new or shocking, given the amount of professional development that has gone into equity work in the past five years. So even if you didn't show up for Shiroki Halli, even if, I mean, and then, given what happened with, you know, in the spring where all of a sudden everybody thought it was cool to be anti-racist, like, none of this is new and none of this is, you know, should be radical at this point. I mean, I'm not being unrealistic, I understand why it will be difficult. But in terms of the shock value, I mean, nobody who works in this district should be feeling like this kind of change is, you know, so off the charts that they can't understand it.
I do know from my own personal teaching experience that virtual or online instruction challenges a couple of things. It definitely challenges the way in which we measure attendance.
Yeah.
One of the stories that I tell, I was talking to one of my students, and I asked if I could share this, and so they've given me permission. We're having a conversation, a young person who lives in the Adirondacks, who said they were trying to write my 10-page paper on their iPhone. Right? So that was a reality check for me in terms of what my level of expectations were. And how do I grade and assess that, not child, right? But that young person's assignment to someone who has multiple computers and Wi-Fi at their, you know, their access? Or a number of students who are the primary caregiver for both of their parents and don't have a quiet space to even do work. So can't attend the synchronous classes that we are talking about, but yet are actively still engaged in the class. And so, we may have to be, not may, we will have to be innovative in how we think about, what does attendance mean if I don't have Wi-Fi and we can't get a hotspot here? What does homework mean if I'm doing it, no joke, with my thumbs and not typing on a keyboard, right? So these were some of the questions we were hoping to pose to our educators, to be anti-racist, to be equity-minded, to be a little bit more innovative while we find ourselves in a health pandemic. If I can, Anna, I see that you're here. I don't know that you've been unmuted, but I very much like to hear your thoughts as a graduate student and a pre-service teacher, but someone who's been very active in this project. Anything that you would add? I'm going to hit your unmute button, if that's okay, if you're still with us here. Anna, anything that you would add to this conversation?
Hi, everyone. Um, to add, I guess I did a lot of research on the dress code portion. And, yeah, just considering what students, what we're asking for students to wear in the comfort of their home and kind of where we can come into play with that. But, yeah, I think the overview is helpful. Yeah, Annie?
Well, you know, my thought about the attendance policy, I'm thinking of all of the logistical work and hardware that went into the spring to getting kids' devices, to getting families' internet connections. So do, where, I mean, are we okay on that score in the sense that we shouldn't be having kids who need to work on their phones or do we have a device shortage? Are we still maintaining internet connectivity?
Lily and Dan?
I'd be happy to talk about that. I'd be happy to talk about that, Sean. My apologies for cutting you off, Sean. Yeah, so we maintained connectivity over the summer for students who were engaged in summer learning, of course. And great. We, so we were maintaining that through the fall. We collected the information around those students who needed connectivity. And so, the folks in the tech department have been reaching out to those folks based on the August 5th survey that we asked families to fill out, making sure that that's all set. I will be honest, there were some late fees that families have incurred over the summer. One of the local companies is pretty amazing, Hayfleet, and they've waived all outstanding late fees for our ICSD families, which is awesome. And they're letting them just like start back up. And Merrill and the village, they've been extraordinary. Merrill has been awesome, great partner, helping families get connected and cover late fees so that we can then get their coverage up and running. And devices are arrived today. iPads for our pre-K through first graders. So our Chromebooks have been deployed to students and then new issues have been going to schools this week. And those iPads came today. They all have to be independently imaged. And then we plan to deliver them over the weekend of the 12th. It should be all done by the 14th.
Lily, if I'm not mistaken, and please correct me if I'm wrong, when I had this conversation with folks earlier, even with our exceptional hard work, that we still had some families that still had no connectivity and we were not able at that point in time. And it may have been 30 was the number that I heard, right? So I just want to make sure that we're, is that correct or?
By the time all was said and done at the end of the school year, there were five. So there were three families who either we couldn't get in touch with through any various means, even going to their homes, or who said, no, thank you. And then two families, it was tens of thousands of dollars to run a line to their house and none of our Wi-Fi hotspots worked.
And I also want to make sure, just someone who spends time in a community, I spend time in Moravia, and I know that the Wi-Fi connection out there does not let me do video chat. So even while I have access, I can check email. I can sometimes do an audio conference that my ability to video conference is null and void. And I know that we also have families who may have some internet connection or can connect, but our expectation of them to be able to video conference would be unfair to them. So I just want to make sure, again, we're all on the same page. So my question is, is that correct, Lily? Dan, I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, there are, there are some challenges, just depending on where you are.
I'm just going to comment overall on the, the, and what's the word? The tone of the attendance policy and the intent. I actually think that virtual instruction is an ideal time to implement something like this. I mean, the very nature of virtual instruction means being punitive isn't going to get you anything. That is actually the nature of all punitive measures. In the end run, it doesn't get you anything, but especially virtually, I can't see in practical terms where, well, even on a one-on-one, but with, I mean, in most cases, people are going to be in a group setting, a quote, virtual class setting. And it's not going to be, you know, one person saying something to another. It's going to be a whole class listening in. So I think that this makes good sense from a variety of angles. And I think it's going to be very, very challenging, but we all know that.
Yeah, Pat, to that idea, I think it's going to be interesting. I know we're still doing this work and our teachers are as well. Between what is the synchronous expectation versus the asynchronous expectation? So I know a number of us on this call can appreciate that, you know, for me to be there with our grandbaby every day at 10:00 a.m. is just not going to be able to happen, even while I know she's going to need to be there every day at 10:00 a.m., right? So for families who are working from home, from, you know, folks who have job expectations, this is going to be a challenging three weeks as we go from the 14th to October 5th. And so, we were trying to think about how do you, Pat, I think as you said, it was great. How do we not operate from a punitive perspective? As, rather than, how do we try to engage folks? How do we try to engage families as much as possible? And that's going to take dialogue with teachers, with our ESPs, with our administrators, with caregivers and families. We're going to have to do some work around that. There's no question about it.
Could I add something about those first three weeks? Just, you know, sort of on behalf of community partners who are all scrambling to see what we can do for those families who were planning to have their kids in in-person school. I mean, many of our families are going to rely on daycare providers who are explicitly saying we cannot support distance learning. And so, I do think that our, particularly for those three weeks, there's going to need to be some sort of policy that understands that, you know, our kid, this family is using daycare that just cannot participate at this point, you know? So I don't know what the answer to that is, but I did want to articulate that I know that, you know, IC3, Cottington, the ICC, they're all going to do their best, but it, you know, they're not going to be able to handle those kind of synchronous expectations for all of the kids in their care.
I think there is a, the last sentence actually addresses that implementation of the ICSD's attendance policies will be flexible during the period from September 15th through October 5th.
Well, I have a question about that. I have a question about that because after October 5th, we're still going to have a whole lot of people doing distance learning. So we continue to have to be flexible. And, you know, in relation to that and in relation to dress code things, I mean, a lot of teachers are going to have a lot of questions about the nuts and bolts, you know? Like, what does it mean to be flexible about attendance? What is it? And also, even just for, like Sean was talking about, you know, the kid who's trying to do an assignment on an iPhone. And, you know, and dress code, you know? What, what happens if there's something in terms of dress code that is, you know, seems inappropriate? And so, I just know that a lot of teachers, and another thing is homework, you know? So I absolutely understand what, you know, the spirit and the rationale behind what was written about homework. But from a teacher's point of view, what am I really being expected to do, you know, about that?
This, and just one reflection on this process, because I only jumped into this process, you know, a few weeks ago, really. But one of the issue was timing, because this document still needs to be vetted through the teaching practitioners and through the board. But school is starting up fairly soon. So I guess my question in terms of process is, will this document be able to be utilized? Or when would a variation, how does the feedback get incorporated? How do people actually apply this to the classroom if it actually hasn't been adopted yet? So what do they do in the meantime before there is a document that's able to be adopted?
So Anna, I can respond to that question as well, some of the points that Moira raised. One, we're very much aware that policy does not dictate practice. So we've had a number of policies in place that do not either get followed or that are, as we were joking, Moira and Pat, about our parking policy from 1976, right? It's on the books, but we're not following that. So in some regards, the real value will be in us having the conversation immediately to help try to change and influence some practices. And so, if we're okay with this, and maybe we put a disclaimer, this is a conversation document. The conversation will help us tremendously, engaging in that, in that way. I think similar to what Moira was saying, the real question is going to be in the, you know, the practicality. I think that's exactly what happened at Ethica College, right? That there was an ideal opening date. And the more throughout the summer, we started thinking about what it meant in detail, the more that it just became overwhelming and overwhelming. And I would assume similarly is going to take place for ICSD, right? The more we start thinking about every last detail that needs to be accounted for, then we start raising additional questions and additional questions. So dress code, Moira, that was my thing. Now, I literally have had students show up to camera meetings in their undergarments.
Yeah, I can see that happening. I saw a student at Wegmans the other day where I wanted to say to her, put some clothes on!
Right. And so, we had a conversation about, well, that was our other conversation we had too, Pat, right? About, so what does it mean to be comfortable? And it wasn't, what does it mean to be non-disruptive? Historically, what we've done is sent people to the principal's office.
Right.
And so, the conversation we were having with Merrill and with Ann saying, let's get away from that and saying, well, the teacher can then have a conversation with the parent or caregiver if something, right? There's other conversations about, go ahead, Pat, sorry?
Oh, no, I basically came here from a conversation with my cousin who teaches high school math in California, and she's teaching virtually. And she has a male student who every day shows up in nothing but his underpants and likes to pan the camera over his body. Now, do we? Now, do we body him? How do, you know, he, he being provocative and disruptive? I know that if I were another person that, I don't know, I went to high school in the seventies, maybe I wouldn't have minded. But now I would feel uncomfortable. And, and I don't know if, I mean, whether there might be some, I, I'm, I'm sure you talked about this, but, you know, my daughter, Vika, has taught classes where people danced around in almost no clothes. And she has gone so off of distance learning that she stopped volunteering for that program.
So I think our conversation has been to think a little bit more about the approach rather than the exact discipline. Historically speaking, that would have meant suspension, right? And now we're trying to do is to try to move it away from there. The good thing about our platform, as I understand it, is that whoever the host is can turn off anyone's camera. So.
I was just going to ask.
So same way that we cannot require students to have their cameras turned on, we can also turn their cameras off if we choose as educators. That's going to take us to get some nuance in this new world about what do we do? And how do we make this happen, right? So I think that's the conversation we need to have with our educators. And I think it will be, I want to write a policy that gives the flexibility to take it sort of incident by incident and not, here's what happens.
Oh, yeah.
You need to go somewhere, right? And, and that's what our current code does though. Our current code is kind of like, you know, you need to go to the principal's office. You need to get an appropriate change of clothes and wait for your parents to come to bring you a change of clothes. Dan, you were going to say something?
No, but we, we did have a, we did have a, a long discussion about this, the dress code. Anna did a tremendous job getting some language for us. One of the things we talked about was simply putting stuff like recovery, private parts or, or items like that. But we decided to, we decided to frame it more on the teacher, student relationship and leveraging that instead of some specifics. That, that was, that was all I was really going to say about the dress code. And the, I mean, the one other thing I would add is we, we don't all, we, we have the ability to show off cameras, but we also have the ability to remove children from the group meeting. So that would be another, that would be another thing to do if the child continues to not wear proper clothing and create a disruption. That's all I wanted to add. Thanks, Sean.
Well, I'm, I'm just going to, I, I just comment again, it kind of overarching comment that is, as Sean was saying, that this is a document that kind of sets a tone. There is, there's absolutely no way that anyone can plan for all of the things that could happen and set out prescriptions. And I, I do really appreciate the tone that it sets. And just be, just refresh my, my memory. Does the, the code of conduct, does the policy committee, the board adopts that? But the, but the policy committee doesn't adopt it or, or we, we endorse it before the board adopts it?
We tried, Moira, a couple of times, right? So in theory, these are all policies, everything in the code of conduct. I think there are, I want to say 22 policies specifically that are each individually numbered that are in the code of conduct. It then gets collapsed into some additional language rights, an introduction, a letter, et cetera. But there are official policies in the code of conduct. So theoretically, it should follow a similar process. Every time we've tried that, we have, it has been an interesting journey is the best way I can phrase it.
So I, I have one more question about the expectations here, and that is the, the letter with regard to mask wearing. Staff members other than administrators are not legally empowered to discipline a student or exclude a student from a district activity because a student is not wearing a mask. So that's referring to in-person instruction. And I do see a refusal to wear a mask in certain situations to be kind of imminent, an imminent threat to the health of others. And this means that a teacher can't say, put your mask on or go outside or talk to me about this sentence.
This, this was more about that a child can't be sent out of the classroom to, a, a teacher cannot remove the child from the classroom, put them in the hallway for not wearing a mask. But certainly a teacher could change the seat or do some other items. I think we're, we're, well, I put this sense in there and I was trying to make sure that, that our staff weren't overreaching on disciplinary actions because a child wasn't wearing a mask. Does that make sense, Pat?
I see, I see the intent. I am concerned that that, the, the, the language may, may cause some, not just difficult situations, but potentially health-threatening situations. And I don't, I don't know what to do about that. This is just, if this is here for feedback, that would, that would be one situation that I would worry about. And I'm thinking probably more at the high school level. Because if you think of the threat of the spread of COVID increases with the age of students.
Yeah, Pat, I think that raises an excellent question. It's making me think two things. One, the last sentence says that the district or the school administrator can require the student. But we were trying to get away from sort of individual classroom folks making the decision. But a principal could come in and require the student and/or take action if a student was not wearing a mask. I also know from our good and trusty friend, Chris Malcolm, that legally at this point in time, there's nothing that can be done when folks are in businesses not wearing a mask. They've called the sheriffs, they've called Ethica Police Department, they've called a number of law enforcement agencies, and they have said repeatedly, there is, there is no, nothing we can do to make that happen. Now, as a school district, we may be able to have some, you know, we have some additional leverage, right? We can remove a child if we deem that's what we want to do as a school district. We should have that conversation. It's also making me think that this document should be available on, on a Google Doc, not for editing, but for comments. So we can add something like Pat's comment, like, well, what does this actually mean, right? And give people the access to add comments to anything so we can see what the comments are. Because I think you're right, Pat, there's a lot of nuance that we're going to have to struggle with in terms of what, what does it mean for, if I'm a classroom teacher and you're telling me I can't require someone in my class to put a mask on?
Sensitivity. Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and also, I mean, am I unmuted? Yes. That, that teachers who have, you know, opted to come into the classroom or potentially, you know, be mandated to come in, that, you know, for them to read that and feel like, oh, I'm in a classroom with a student who refuse, I mean, in a, in a room in, in sub-zero weather. And so we don't have windows open. And I really can't make a student who refuses to wear a mask leave the room. I have to wait to connect with an administrator. I, I think it's just, it's going to push some buttons. So, you know, the vulnerability will be felt.
Yeah, that's the reason why we're having this conversation and see what language we may want to, you know, nuance, if that makes sense, or sort of massage before we send it out to folks. I, I completely agree. I, I had a question about homework as a teacher. You can't tell me if I can assign homework. In fact, it's, at least as I read the contract, it's, it's pretty clear in there that I have the right to assign homework if I choose. Now, what does that mean in this time period? Can we tell teachers, look, you, you can assign homework, but you can't punish if someone doesn't do homework? That's a different conversation.
Well, I was thinking the other day and, and ended up being very thankful that I'm no longer teaching about how I would teach AP literature in this environment. I, I would have to, you know, just absolutely start from scratch with a whole new approach, which would require a lot of thinking on my part. And I'll, you know, a lot of time to say what really would somewhat meet the, the objectives of that course, but is actually doable in this situation.
I agree, Moira, we've had the same question about 180 days of instruction.
Yeah.
Right? What does that mean? How do you measure it, right? So, you know, again, I think to Merrill's point, like, we're in a whole new world to build some different things and think about it differently. And it is going to require us to change pedagogy. It's going to require us to change how we think about some of these things. And, and I'm hoping that people have patience with us, that we're not going to get it right. And I think you're right, it's going to push some buttons. And so what I'm hoping we can communicate to teachers is this is not a mandate. This is a conversation, right? So how can we dialogue about this? This is not the board saying, this is the new policy.
Well, I, I actually, I think that that paragraph on homework doesn't mandate anything. That it does say, be conscious of every effort to be conscious of the needs of students. And, you know, I, I think that that, that could stand. I am concerned about that one sentence on grading, which is telling teachers what to do and not do. And the, the example that comes to mind is really a student who doesn't turn in anything, who doesn't complete any assignments, who, who doesn't show up virtually or in person. If we don't have a failing, if we have a, you can't give that kid a failing grade, do we have a, do we put in a new grade of NA, not attended? I, seriously, that is, that is very, the grading sentence is very prescriptive. And students impacted by equity issues, does that mean that some kids can, can exhibit certain behaviors and not have a failing grade while a kid who lives in a big house in Huga Heights can do exactly the same thing? And is that equitable?
Yeah, that, those are great questions. And we're going to keep debating them, which I, you know, it's really helped me think more deeply about the purpose of education. The example that was given is that teachers were giving tests, for example, that were synchronous, synchronized tests. And some students, they were sitting, taking a test with three siblings around them because there was no quiet space. And does that grade matter the same as someone who can find a quiet space? But you're right, Pat, it can also be inverted, right? Like, I, it may not be space, I could be choosing to do certain things or, and I, I don't have an answer. I, I'm just telling you the conversation that we were having about how do we measure homework and tests and grades in an equitable way when folks may not be having equitable lived experiences? And I don't, yeah, please.
I'm going to say, oh, thank you, honey. In the basement. Oh.
I went to get paper towels and it was on the portable steps.
Okay, got it. When I thought we were going to have a tornado, I was getting ready to go down into the basement and do some online work. So my suggestion would be that I think that section on grading needs to sound more nuanced like the section on homework and not say, this will not happen, but that teachers will take all kinds of circumstances into consideration. And I, I mean, that, that would be my thought because this, you know, I spent, I spent a lot of time as a gatekeeper to the less noble proclivities of Cornell undergraduates. And with regard to policy, it was like sticking my fingers in a dyke because they're very intelligent kids and very high achieving kids. And when they wanted to do something, you know, it was fun for them to put a wedge, you know, into policy and break that open. And to say, oh, we'll not be penalized with failing grades on equity issues just seems to me to be asking for trouble.
So here's what I'll try to do. I'll try to come up with some language that we can put as a disclaimer to send this out to folks. We have a meeting, I think one last one, I know Anne can't make it, Dan, for Thursday, to maybe try to work some of this language that was done before we send it out to a couple other groups for feedback, right? Again, not, not board policy, a conversation. And I'll try to share, or Dan, maybe you and I can work on a paragraph that could go ahead of this to let folks know that the goal is to engage in dialogue. What I'll also do for Moira and for Pat is to get a T-shirt made for us that says, less noble proclivities. I don't know if anyone wants one of those. Dan, if you want a T-shirt, let me know, but I'm stealing that line.
But, but Sean, if we just say less no, noble proclivities, just without the context, somebody's going to say, it should say fewer noble proclivities and it just.
No, 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 no. No, it could go either way.
It could.
Depending upon whether fewer is modifying the proclivities or less is referring to the noble.
Oh, we could say exhibiting less no, less noble proclivities. And if we want that to be a, a policy committee T-shirt, then everybody's going to want to be on policy just so they can get the cool T-shirt.
So Dan, you're getting an experience when I'm saying that we love the language. This is, this is not an exaggeration that we, we love the language. So I'll work with Dan and Anna and the Code of Conduct Advisory Council on Thursday. We will work some language, we'll send it to you all. We will not send it out to anybody until Friday, realizing that you may not get a chance to take a look at it, but we'll give a day and we'll highlight what changes were made in, in yellow so you can see what language has been shifted or the ways we should do it. And we'll also try to craft that paragraph that invites conversation. Does that, does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's, that's everything I wanted to comment on with two minutes to spare.
Fantastic. I, I do not know if our special meeting is another Zoom link or not. But I'm going to, I'm going to, there you go. So I'm going to call this meeting to close to give a minute to stretch before our special voting meeting, if that works.
Sounds great.
Great. Anna, thank you for all your work. Dan, we'll be in touch, we'll see you both hopefully Thursday afternoon, Thursday morning.
Sounds great. Thanks, Sean.
All right, Moira and Pat, see you in a minute.